I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Cloudy rainy Monday afternoon, evening. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Yes, here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
They're all here. First thing we have on our agenda is a public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for police, fire, garbage, and refuse fees at 6:00 PM.
Vote.
You have motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, I'll open up the public hearing for our police, fire, and garbage refuse fees. Just like to let everybody know that all the millages and the fees are staying the same with no increase. The proposed fire mills is 2.125 mills. Police is 4.85. And the garbage fees are $172 a year. But if there's some spots, like Russellisle, a few places, they don't do curbside recycling, those areas are 137 a year. So if anyone wants to come up, state your name and address and have at it. We're all dressed up and no one wants to dance?
No.
Okay.
My name is Steve Kraft, 6431 Genau. Okay? None of you guys know me. I've been here for seven years, been coming here since the early 70s. What I'm about to say is probably going to upset a lot of people. I'm sorry about that, that's not my intent. A little bit of background about me, so you know that I know what I'm talking about. I'm a retired commander with Michigan State Police. I was in the Michigan State Police, 4,500 people. I retired in the top 20 of that agency, okay? So I've commanded a lot of people, I know a lot about police and what it does. When I retired, I went to work for the federal government. I went overseas and I worked as a police advisor to other countries that were in what we called less permissible environments, okay? They weren't friendly. So I did that for 15 years, retired, moved to Clay, here I am, okay? The reason I'm coming here and to talk about this the way I'm going to talk about it is because I tried the other route. You would think that somebody coming up doing a public speaking thing, going to say something about the police department, they should at least talk to the police department first, right? I did that, I tried. Not once, not twice, not two times, not three times, not four times. Seven times I went into the police department to talk to the chief about what was going on. Every time he was there, the dispatcher said, "He's busy, we can't talk to you right now." So I said, "Well, 8,000 residents in this community, damn," you know? I've never once had a citizen come in and didn't talk to him, never. So then I wrote a couple of letters. First letter I wrote, no response at all. Not even an acknowledgement they received it. Second letter I wrote, admittedly a bit sarcastic. At the end of the letter, I usually write, "Thank you for your time and attention to this matter." This letter I wrote, I usually say, "Thank you for your time and attention to this matter," but this time I'm going to say, "I'm not going to say it, because you didn't give it any." Few days later, lieutenant shows up at my door. Not the chief, the lieutenant shows up. Sits down, apologizes, "Sorry, we missed it, dah dah dah." We exchange emails, we're going to talk for a while. Emails unanswered. Emails, nothing. I said, "Okay, I'm giving up on this stuff." So that's how I got to where we're at right now, okay? It's been building for me for a little while. Police budget is $3.6 million a year. You say the millage is staying the same, and it is, 4.85. What you don't tell everybody is you're raising $200,000 more dollars off of that millage than you did last year. So it is increasing, okay? In the last eight years that I did the budgets, it's increased $157,000 a year, on average. This year it's $200,000. It's a lot of money. For the last eight years, it's gone up from the budget it was eight years ago to now, $2.2 million in eight years. It's a lot of money. So I started looking about where the money's going, because I was already ticked off that they wouldn't talk to me. So then I started doing the research on the department. We've got 22 people roughly in the department, half of them are in command. I don't know if you guys know this, but just a few months ago, I know you know this, you implemented a corporal position in the department, right? That put six people in command for 10 officers on the road. Come on. What is that? You know, the average is seven, in the state police, it's seven to 15 for first supervisor. So I'm not saying it needs to be that way, I'm just saying, that's a little extreme. One command for every two officers, a little extreme. What it did was, on the budget, you gave a 5% raise to the officers. Kudos, everybody gets a raise. Created a corporal position, you gave them 6.5% raise over the highest paid officer. That compounds itself, because now the corporal makes 6.5% over the officer, fine. Sergeant makes 12% over that. Then lieutenant makes 5% over that. Then the chief gets whatever the command gets. So this thing compounds, no wonder it's got to raise up 1.5, you know, $150,000, $200,000 a year. It's the wages that are killing us, for the oversight, okay? Look at the guy, I don't know who does that, but look at how much that's going to cost over the years, just from that one position, raising everybody above them, okay? Overtime, holiday pay, all that stuff, that's a lot of money. I went through the board meeting minutes for the last three years, that's all that's on the web. So I went through three years. I went through the agenda, I went through the meeting minutes, I went through the supervisors' report. Not one mention of the police department, except one time, when you voted to have the corporal position. Nothing about the police department, ever. Fire chief comes in here once a month, gives a great report, I like it, he's a good report. I don't know any of these people, okay? But he gives a good report. But the chief, you would think, I'd not say the chief, but the police department, anybody from the police department would come in to give a report to the people of the township, and they would know that there's been 12 sexual assaults in the township in the last six months, eight BNEs and 11 stolen vehicles. You'd think somebody would tell us about this stuff. But you're not mandating it either. So we're not getting it. The township, Clay Township is the only township in the county that has its own police department, only one. And it cost us almost, well, it cost us $3.6 million a year to have it. Fort Gratiot has more residents and more taxed households, they don't have one, they contract 4.5 deputies. Port Huron Township, 10,000, 4.2 deputies. Kimball Township, 9,500, they don't even have any dedicated police, they don't even contract for them. And I don't know anybody at the sheriff's department, I'm not commenting about that, I'm not affiliated with them either, but I went through and I asked for their contracts for what they pay for all those other places. And it's a third of what we're paying here. A third, for the same number of people on the road. We have 10 officers, because of the 12-hour day shifts, I know how this works, the max you can have is five, because the other five are off, right, in a day. They can only work 12-hour days, it's like 3.25 days, 3.25 days, so they gotta be off so they can work the other days, right? So it's the way the schedule works. You've got 10, but you're really only getting five on the road. And I know some of the sergeants and people work the road too, but we can't count that, because they've got other duties to do. So there's alternate solutions to this, and one of them is, you only dedicate $790,000 out of the regular budget for police. That's not enough even to pay for the sheriff's department thing, okay? That's just not enough. So there is need to be a millage. I don't think it needs to be $2.8 million, I just don't think it does. And looking at the math, and if you look at what you're going to get for it, I don't think it does. You could restructure the police department. As a board, you could just pull it in and say, "Okay, we're going to restructure this." That's going to take a lot of time and energy and stuff, and it could be done. Or, as everybody in the community's been telling me, you're going to probably do what you normally do, the same thing you've been doing, and nothing about it, okay? One of the things people warned me about, and I hate to say this, they repeatedly warned me that you won't listen, that you won't do anything with the information they have, and then you always do things the way you do them, and that's just the way it's going to be. I'm sorry, maybe you will, I don't know, but if nobody brings it to your attention, then if you're not going to do anything about it, then it's on you, because the rest of us know there's something different going on, okay? There's another way of doing it. A lot of people told me that I'm going to get retaliated against by the board, I'm not worried about you guys, by the police department, I'm not worried about that either. I've been around a long time, spent a lot of stuff, I'm not worried about any of that stuff, okay? But why would some people in the community tell me that I would be fearful, I should be fearful about being retaliated by the board, or fearful about being retaliated by the police department? What the hell thing is that to say?
Wow.
I mean, people tell me that, I'm sorry, but I cannot imagine, being a career law enforcement guy, four years doing this, that somebody would say you should fear the police? Are you kidding me? So anyway, I know it's going to make people mad, and I apologize to the police, I've been one for my whole life, I don't mean anything against you at all, I truly don't. I don't mean anything against you. But I know what I'm talking about, that's why I give my background, it's not about ego. I've done what I've done in my life, and I don't need to impress anybody about any of it, okay? But damn, this thing's gotten out of control. $200,000 this year, you're right, the millage stays the same. $157,000 a year, on average, for eight years, $200,000 this year, and then the wages are just going to compound and compound and compound and compound. Pretty soon, 4.85 isn't going to cut it, you're going to have to raise it again. That's $750 on average to every household in this township, just to pay for that. That's a lot of money. So I'm sorry if I upset you, please, trust me, I love you guys, okay? I'm sorry, but we've got to do something, because we can't keep forward paying this. Thanks, I know I went over three minutes, I apologize, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Bernardo, did you want to speak?
Pardon?
Did you want to speak?
That's why I'm walking up here, boss.
Okay.
My name is Bernardo Licata, I live at 1825 South Channel Drive, and I've been on the island since about 2000, but I've been coming out this way since 1955. I'm one of the older people in the community. I was at Field Day on Saturday, and I picked up this information and a document that talks about what's going on here, and it was the very first that I'd ever heard of it, in terms of these raises and so forth. And if this information is accurate, and this gentleman, I don't remember his name, has seemed to have confirmed some of the things that are in this document. I wrote it. You wrote it? Yes. Okay, good. So at least I know its source, that's a good thing. There's a great deal of detail in here, I'm not going to read it all to you, but the salient points that jumped out at me were that, as he said, we have 3,800 tax-paying households, a $3.6 million budget, and an annual significant increase. Now, Township is the only, Clay Township is the only township in St. Clair County that has its own police department. I don't know the rationale for that, I've lived here all these years and just expected that, gee whiz, we've got a police department. I know Algonac used to have a police department, and have now learned that that's been turned up to the county, and they're policed by the county, for significantly less dollars. Now, according to this, the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department could cover the personnel that we have for approximately a million dollars a year. I don't know if that's true, or if it's a little bit more than a million dollars, that's not the point. The point is, is that we don't need a new millage to cover all this extra expense and a new building, a new police department building, a new police physical bricks and mortar. That's ridiculous. Now, as this gentleman said, and I'll repeat, by not renewing this millage, the average property tax per household be cut by $745.14 a year. Good research, good math, thank you. Okay. Now, I'd like to simply offer my opinion, a couple of them, as a matter of fact. I personally have no problem with staffing, police staffing, police pay, we love you guys, we want you to be here, okay? But I believe Clay Police should be outsourced, as are all the other townships in this county. I mean, it's, I learned this back in Economics 101 in 1960, for crying out loud. Economy of scale is a pretty simple concept. If you don't understand that, go take a course. Further and most important, I believe, that the township and the entire board, by moving forward with this, will clearly demonstrate fiscal irresponsibility. Fiscal irresponsibility. And that's an important factor. I'm not an attorney, I am not an attorney, I don't ever want to be an attorney, but I understand enough in my old age that fiscal responsibility could potentially open the township to a class action lawsuit. Every one of you on the board and the township being named in this suit, that could cost the township way more than trying to, doing a restructure on the police department and having the county handle it instead of doing what you're thinking about doing. Thank you for your attention. I'm real disappointed to hear this gentleman tried so hard to get somebody's attention and failed. Well, maybe you'll listen. Maybe you'll listen.
Thank you, Bernardo.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Moisorek, I live at 7334 Middle Channel Drive in Harson's Island. And I have a lot of friends, relatives, neighbors, and everybody I know is extremely happy with the police force, they have excellent service, which is most important to everybody, more so than a couple people coming up with all these facts, who knows if they're true or not true, and the numbers, the $700, I mean, everybody can tell you they could do stuff for a million dollars, and maybe for the first year they can do it for the million dollars, but after the police are gone, then it's going to cost $3 million. It's like everything else going on in the country. You know, a lot of this stuff sounds great, but in reality, it never, ever, ever works out that way. And if anybody was in business, they would realize, you know, this is a big crock. I mean, a couple people don't like something, and nothing against anybody, I mean, there's a lot of people that are very happy how it goes on, maybe people could look at some of these facts, I'm sure there's a lot of other facts involved, other than the wages or an extra officer, you know, there's probably leaky roofs in the buildings, and people analyze the situation of some of this stuff, and it's cheaper in the long run to build a new building, or whatever, I don't even know anything about that, but, you know, these couple facts here and there don't cover, you know, the whole gamut of what's going on in this township. There's a lot more to this, that's all I, everybody's happy with what's going on around here, that everybody I know.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Brian Klingenberg, 9032 Field Road. I'm under the assumption that we outsource the two other townships with two full-time officers, one in each township, and that's all I got to say, that our officers are being used elsewhere.
Any other public comments?
My name is Jeff Morgan, I live at 8841 Anchor Bay Drive. I came here to say exactly what the second speaker just said, we're almost word for word. And it is fiscally irresponsible for you to continue with this millage, there's no doubt in my mind, it just doesn't make sense. There's a reason that every other township doesn't have a police force, they outsource, there's a reason for that. You should think about that.
Good evening, I'm Mike Malick, 8117 South Channel Drive, Harson's Island. Fortunately, I've had the experience of sitting on one of these panels like this before, elected officials. The hardest decision is what you're going to spend your money on and what we do for the residents. This police force has shown that they are more than capable and are here whenever you need them. That costs money, no matter where you are. And to depend on someone else to bring us services, I don't know why we do that, we worked hard to get here. I pay pretty high taxes in this township, and I'm proud to do it, especially if we can keep a force like this in our neighborhood, because without them, I wouldn't be here anymore. So I think we ought to look at the reality. The money is the money that's spent everywhere. And if you think we're going to jump to another force, and they're never going to increase, guess what, eventually, they're going to charge us more too. So I think we ought to stay where we are and be fiscally responsible.
My name is Diane Miller, 7311 B Lane, and I was happy to hear that this gentleman had some actual facts. You know, in addition to the police officers that we pay for, we also pay for our own dispatch system. And that dispatch system has to be upgraded on a regular basis, we have to send our dispatchers to training, and that costs money. And we're the only township that runs our own 911 and police department, and I don't know how many board meetings I've come to where we've hired a new dispatcher and we have to send them to training. So it's, something needs to change, we're paying way too much for our police budget, and I believe that it is fiscally irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Verchave, 739 North Channel. I know from personal experience, having moved from Mount Clemens to Clay Township, that we dissolved our police department and what with the Macomb County Sheriff's Department, and we saw no difference in service, no difference in professionalism, the only thing we saw was the savings to the taxpayers. Artie, you know, people on the island pay a lot of money for that waterfront property, and if you can give us any kind of a break, I think it's your job to give us a little break. We all need breaks every now and then. It's getting expensive to stay on the island. Any little bit helps. The service is going to be the same. I can prove it to Mount Clemens, that's all I got to say.
Anybody else? Anyone wants to talk about garbage? Fire? Okay.
I do have a question about garbage.
Okay.
Why don't you bring it up? We don't have a pickup for lawn refuge on the island or in the township, I have to physically bring it over here to...
Right, we looked at doing yard waste, and MTA wouldn't even give us a quote, it's very expensive. About three, four years ago, we had an add-on where if you wanted to add-on, individual people could, and I think in the whole township it was eight, that said, "We'll pay for it and do it." So...
So our option is just to bring it over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or have a fire pit.
I guess so, when it just...
I was joking. Okay, anybody else? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to say something. My name is Donella Hawkins, I live at 8403 Starville Road. I'm a new resident to Clay Township, and had no idea how the police department was structured in this community. And we built a home and was just absolutely floored by our first tax bill. And my thinking, as the area that I live on, on Starville Road, and I've communicated with you about this, Artie, is that I don't, I am definitely pro-police, I love our men and women in blue, but the amount of money that I pay in taxes, and I can't even get broadband...
We're working on it.
I keep hearing that, "We're working on it," but to only live a couple miles outside of the village, and I still can't get broadband, but I'm paying thousands of dollars in taxes every year, you know, that's, you know, something that kind of makes me go, hmm. We, you know, we live in a community where everybody really should have broadband available.
I agree.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing for police, fire, garbage, and refuse fees at 6:26.
Closing the whole hearing or the public comments?
The hearing for, the public hearing for this, yes. Okay, we have motion and support?
No.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion passes. Next we go to bills payable, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $193,638.29.
Support.
Okay, have motion and support? Discussion? I'd like to bring up, we had one bill in here that was quite a lot, and it was the last page, the top under the water department, we're paying My Place Communities, it's a refund for $26,862. We had a problem with the meter there, and we were overcharging them for like three years. And we figured it out, and so we're giving them a refund on what we overcharged them, so that's in this. Just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. So, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, I'm sure this is why everyone's here, is for the supervisors' report. Been working a lot on building issues, and actually met the past two and a half weeks, I think, since the last meeting, with potential investors in Clay. A lot of positive stuff. The Pearl Beach parking lot and the bathrooms that the DDA is working on are moving along. And paving is done in the Pearl Beach area, and the contracts are supposed to come back. There's a low spot, we got a good duck pond, and they're going to come back and take care of that. And the bathrooms, they're being finished, and we have to do some landscaping and striping the parking lot to follow after that. And we are looking at installing some security cameras for, on the pier. This past week, a state senator, Kevin Hertel, held a press conference downtown Sans Soucy. It was attended by, well, I wrote 50, I don't know, 30, 40 people, not sure, but he announced that Clay... week, a state senator, Kevin Hurtel, held a press conference downtown Sans Souci. It was attended by, well, I wrote 50, I don't know, 30, 40 people, not sure. But he announced that Clay has secured a $2 million in the state budget that's going to go towards a wastewater treatment plant for Harson's Island. We originally asked for $3.5 million for the project, but the $2 million was going to pay for building the plant and hooking up downtown Sans Souci, plus a few other homes. The $2 million will be available to us in October, and we will also be applying for Eagle grants for additional $1.5 million for the project. We are, we are working with mitigating the wetlands with Eagle and the property that we tend to use. The carbon credit study came in, and our, this plant is going to produce around 128 tons of carbon credits per year. And because of that, Debbie Stavinal has actually shown a lot of interest in helping out financially the project, too. So, yeah, my thanks to Kevin Hurtel and our state rep, John DeBoyer, for making this happen. We are having a town hall meeting with engineers that developed the plant. And our engineers here and other people that are way smarter than me about this process to explain the process and answer any questions about it. We do have a pre-application meeting with Eagle, August 22nd, and that's for our engineers and our planners to review the Maple Street site with Eagle to put this plant in. We're also taking a second look at the Harson's Island Nature Park. We have examples where Eagle has allowed or approved similar permits that we applied for and were denied. And I've had conversations myself with some of the Eagle people, and basically, they told us, "Reapply, and hopefully we'll get that passed." And if we get, get the permits that we're requesting from Eagle, then at that time, I'll be going for a DNR trust fund grants that will pay for 75% of any of the development costs for this. It's a nature park with a handicap kayak launch. Bathroom, I think we had a bird watching platform that actually, the Audubon's going to help pay for that. Audubon Society. Had some high-level meetings with architects over the public safety building we're considering. We have three different grant opportunities that would help pay for this building. And also, we're going to be asking the county for some help. In addition, I met with Senator Gary Peters' staff about the project, and they are very interested in helping us out. First through homeland security monies, and then if not, a federal earmark. So, at least at this point, funding looks pretty positive for this. Had a discussion with the U.S. Border Patrol, and they basically said, "It's never been this busy, our border here, with crossings." And I just want to put a little PSA out to keep on, keep the lookout for boats with no lights, running lights at night, boats dropping off passengers and then leaving right away, or they're dropping off passengers with luggage, or these people appear lost. If you see that, notice it. Call, call the Border Patrol or call our dispatch, because that's what's, the leads that we call them are their best tips. I know they, I did, they did a bus up in St. Clair where someone was flashing a light on the Canadian side. Then the people would notice a boat with no lights. And that they called, and it turned out to be a pretty good tip for them. So, keep that in mind. I've been busy planning the Algonquin Outdoor Classroom and Nature Trail. Got quotes for the asphalt, fixing asphalt on a trail. And we have a new entrance sign order. Over by the Algonquin Middle School, there's a beautiful woods, and there's a trail system out there. And we're putting in, it was there, but it got, it needed to be refurbished big time. And we got local service groups. They're going to revitalize the outdoor classroom so they can hold classes out there. We got a little area they can do science projects. I actually pulled a DNR in, and they, they've been working with the fifth grade, checking out, you know, they did a biopuliss, they call, where they go out and ID all kinds of plants and animals and trees and things. And the kids are really excited and fired up about it. So we've been working on that. Hopefully get that done by the time school opens. Another thing we're considering, too, is making a, what do they call it? A book trail, where the fifth graders, they'll, they'll pick different books. And they take the pages, and they'll put them in display cases, cases throughout the trail so you can actually read a book as you walk the trail. So, it's kind of cool. And, you know, get them interested in reading. I don't know if you know this, but they've been installing several quilt blocks in Clay Township and Elginac lately. We put one, well, it's almost up at the Colony Tower. There's one up at St. John's Marsh, one in our park. Harson's Island Ferry has one. And we're waiting for our bathrooms to be finished. We'll have one for Pearl Beach. We got one out here on our log cabin. It's the St. Clair County Quilt Trail, and starting here in Clay and going up to the thumb. And it's pretty cool because it has a quilt block, you know, and there's a little QR code, and you can put your phone on there. It'll take you to a website. It'll tell you what you're looking at, the history of the area, and everything else. And believe it or not, these are pretty big tourist attractions. And I know the quilters are coming out with a brochure here pretty soon. And it definitely helps tourism in our area.
Can you explain? I've never seen a quilt block. So is it like inside glass or something?
No, they're four foot by, there's one right out here by the log cabin.
All right.
It's like a quilt. I know my fiancee painted some of them. And there's different symbols that quilters have.
Okay.
And we had a few meetings with our pickleball, you know, we built these pickleball courts, and they're very busy. And had a few meetings with those groups and trying to get some leagues going, and have times for more advanced players, and then times for beginning players. But what I've seen, which is, makes me happy, that those pickleball courts are being used by people of all ages. Farmer's Market is, we have a farmer's market now in the Clay Township Park. Every Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00. I was there. I got a really good molasses cookie and fudge last time. Music in the Park, we have two, actually, well, now, two more weeks. We had a guitarist play there this last Thursday with Doggupalooza. It was a good event. And we have another band playing this Thursday, Verum, I think it's called. It's a high-energy rock. And we also started in the park, is taking off a rock snake. People paint rock, paint rocks, and they make a trail. It's Clayton the Rock Snake. And we're going to see how long we can make it. With Music in the Park, we're actually doing a food drive that goes, and the food or money that we collect goes to our blessing boxes. We have one here in our park, right here, where we stock it with food, and anybody needs food. And here, we have one for pets, too. They can come and get it. There's also one Meals Enterprise down the road about a half a mile, and Dr. Megan's office in Elginac also has. So we're trying to raise money. People bring in food that we collect, that donate, or money. And we collect them at Music in the Park. And someone doing a kid's swimming pool, and we filled it up last week, about three quarters of the way full. And I actually, to raise attention and hopefully raise a little bit of money and/or canned foods, I challenged the mayor of Elginac, Rocky Gillis, to a jello fight with us sitting in that kid's pool full of jello. And we're going to have fun doing that. So I'll raise money for a good cause. And we decided we're going to, we're going to do one more Music in the Park. Summer's not over with yet. It's actually going to be August 24th, Thursday. And we have, what's the name of the band? From Here to Infinity, I think it's called? It's an awesome Eagles tribute band. Journey. Was it? Journey. Journey, oh, yeah, not, yeah, Journey Band, not Eagles. Thanks. And we're encouraging people to that night to bring school supplies, and we'll pass them along. I know that two days after that, we're doing a backpack giveaway, where we got about 350 backpacks, and we're going to stuff with school supplies. And if we get those filled, we'll turn the rest of the supplies over to the teachers. Because school supplies, I read, have gone up 24% this year.
That's a lot.
So it's a lot for parents and the teachers. So that's the end of my report.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
On the cameras for Pearl Beach, are we all going, also going to consider maybe putting cameras outside the bathrooms? I'm just concerned about...
Well, that would be...
So the dock and the bathrooms, both?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then, at the field day, I was talking to the Chris Craft booth, and they were talking about, if possibly, do something at the Pearl Beach to promote Chris Craft?
Well, we're going to...
That's where, you know, the town...
There's an interest of getting a mural painted of the old DUR train station at Pearl Beach, and what the pier looked like about 100 years ago.
Okay.
So, and we have a quilt block going up there. So...
All right, I'll let them know.
All right. Next, we have public comments. If we have anyone who wants to talk about anything they so desire, come up and...
Gary Yentelak, on behalf of Brian and Karen Klingenberg. I just wondered what the status was as to the Elginac sandpit removal permit, mitigation of them cutting down the trees. And supposedly, you were going to wait till you got the planning commission minions. But I guess I heard that they didn't have the meeting. So I just wondered when this is going to come back on your board's agenda. So can you tell me that?
At this point, no.
Okay.
But I will let you know.
And then, I wanted to give this letter out to you. My clients had given it to the planning commission some time ago. But, and it has various details as to their situation and your ordinance. So I knew you weren't going to take any action tonight, but I gave you time to read it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While I was here, I wanted to point out on the second page, there's provisions directly from your ordinance, Section 20-36. And when you look to Section 5, it says, "All adjoining properties that permit residential use shall be protected by a minimum six-foot-high earthen berm with no greater than a one-on-three slope and a three-foot-wide crown planted with appropriate grasses or similar vegetation designed to stabilize the slopes and provide erosion and blowing of soil materials. The site facing the residential use district shall be supplemented by planting with evergreen shrubs and/or evergreen trees designed to give the berm a more natural appearance." It seems to me that that ordinance provision is mandatory because it says "shall" be protected. They cut down the trees, for whatever rhyme or reason. And so I think you have to enforce that provision. Then in Section 6, it says, "Hours of operation shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. to noon Saturday with no sunny or holiday hours unless otherwise specified or permitted by the township board." So, once again, it has mandatory language that limits the operation. And when this current group purchased the property, there were restrictions in place. If they did their appropriate due diligence, they would have known that. And the 40 acres is not zoned industrial. It's zoned residential. So I think you have to, when you get around to deciding what you're going to do, or what the planning commission is going to do, you have to take into consideration that one, those other provisions say you're to protect the residents. And when this was up a couple years ago for review, Mr. Bryson in the minutes said, "You're here to protect the residents." It's not just to protect the business person, it's the residents. So we'd just like you to, you know, take a look at that and keep me informed. You know where I'm at as to when this is going to be on the planning commission agenda or your board's agenda. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Diane Miller, again, 7311 B Lane. I noticed that there's going to be a public hearing regarding the algae treatment over on Harson's Island.
It's a town hall meeting, not a public hearing.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. Okay, so is that the time when all of the information about it, about how it's going to be funded and all that's going to be laid out?
Yeah.
Is that going to be televised, or I mean, videoed, so that those of us who don't want to spend the money to go over to the island can view it?
I can see if we can get, make that happen.
Well, my, my, I guess the one thing, from what I'm understanding, is, is that it's only covering the Sans Souci area, plus about 100 homes. And it's going to be $4 million, and only $2 million in grants. And I'm really wondering how that's, how that's going to be funded for the rest of it? Is it going to be taxed upon all of us?
No.
Is it going to be a special assessment?
No. No, they're both of those.
Okay. Well, all that information be at the town hall?
Yep.
So if we want to know, we have to go to that meeting? There's no, no documentation prior to the town hall that we can review? Nothing?
Want to come in and see me? That's fine.
Okay. I'm sure I'm not the only one that has curiosities about the funding of that.
It's not going to cost you a nickel.
I'm sorry?
It's not going to cost you a nickel.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other public comments?
Brian Klingenberg, 9032 Field Road. So the berm, just to provide protection from noise, we have all tall trees over there. So when winter comes, all these leaves are gone. It's beautifully green right now. But come winter and fall, all those trees and leaves, they're all down and bare. And then, I know you two are somewhat hard of hearing, but when you guys came out there, you said you couldn't hear anything. All right? So I just want to play a little video. And this is what I hear. All day. It's all day long. That was taken just the other day. And this also was taken the other day. And this also was taken the other day. And every time they empty a truck, this is what we get to hear. So when you're sitting there on your couch, it sends you right off the couch. And when this was permitted for these guys to go over there and start mining this area, the previous owners didn't mine for three to four months out of the year. This new owner mines 24/7, 365. That's all I got to say.
My name is Karen Klingenberg, 9032 Field Road. And we're having this discussion over ordinance that should already be there. I don't understand why I'm fighting so hard for something that should already be there. We have been fighting this for a year and a half. Nothing has been done, not one thing. Not the fence, not a storage, nothing. And I read the creed, the Clay Township creed, that ordinance and zoning is at the top of your list and there is nothing to stop you guys. And the health and welfare of the community is your top priority. I have not seen that for me or my family. So I don't know what else to do. This is it. You're either going to do it or you're not.
My name is Donna Holacoglu, 898 North Channel Drive. I'm going to read off my notes because I have a tendency to get lost in my thoughts as I'm speaking. I'm standing here at this public forum as a taxpayer that just paid their 2023 summer taxes, as all of you are getting together your finances to write out those checks. I would like to address a budget amendment, resolution 2023-19, Clay Township General Appropriation Act, due to additional expenses in various departments. This amendment was made on June 29th. I strongly urge all taxpayers to watch this part of the meeting on YouTube, specifically 21 minutes into the meeting. My concern is an additional $5,200 awarded to Cindy Valentine for clerk expenses. These expenses are explained as additional cost for her son's surgery. I'm assuming maybe the deductible or the copay. Cindy, I am sincerely sorry for your son's health conditions. I do hope that his surgery helped his problem, but I do not feel your additional costs should be a burden on your neighbors, the taxpayers. My daughter is having a baby, my first grandchild. Due to circumstances that she cannot control, she has to see a specialist. And yes, that additional expense is out of her pocket, not her employer's. Who out there hasn't been surprised with a medical bill or a copayment for unseen expenses? By the township awarding Cindy Valentine the additional expenses for her son's medical, this has now set a precedence for all medical insured employees of Clay Township to seek compensation towards their additional medical expenses. If requests for future medical expenses are denied, will this not open a door for additional lawsuits? I strongly disagree with the fact that additional medical expenses of $5,200 were paid by me and my neighbors, the taxpayers. Let's put this into perspective. At a township meeting on June 5th, item 1H under new business, Artie hesitated and was concerned over an additional taxpayer expense of $250 when it was requested to have a few meetings added to the agenda schedule to be held on Harson's Island. Never actually stating what the cost would be for, but concerned over $250 unexplained cost to the public. Yet $5,200 was awarded towards employee Cindy Valentine's additional medical costs. With my little time left for public comments, I would also like to address the resolution for the agenda specifically for the police millage. I do strongly support the blue as well, but when is enough enough? When will our township consider outsourcing police with county sheriffs like Elginak did and surrounding communities also have? I formerly resided as well in Oakland Township, one of the more wealthier communities in Oakland County, and they were protected by the Oakland County Sheriff Department. We are just a small rural community that is not growing. When do we stop this bleed and still have the same protection? And why don't we? Thank you.
I would encourage you to make an appointment with Cindy and she can explain how the Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance works.
Everyone pays, copays, everyone pays. Because you have a small budget for your insurers, that's not my problem.
I would just encourage you to do that.
As a taxpayer, my children, we all pay our copays.
Right, I would just encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
That's all. Thanks. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing done. Moving right along, the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the board meeting minutes of 7:17:23. The request for Ron Derga and Roger Boone for their S4 operator license education for $800, July payroll E F T, board approved bills of 7:17 and in-between meetings.
Support. Okay, a motion and support, any discussion on any of them?
I had some questions on the in-between meetings expenses. There's work cargo shorts for Joe Bonhof for $75. What is that about?
Is that a?
Cargo shorts, we're paying for?
Uniformal reimbursement?
It's not included with the uniforms already?
No.
I mean, is that what department? Is that police?
Water.
Water department? Water. So we buy everybody's cargo shorts?
Not everybody's, they can buy things for their job.
They have a uniform allowance.
Okay. And what's the Darren Tenbus shootout in court suit? What, for $564 a court suit?
That's a reimbursement as well.
It's another reimbursement?
That's in the police department?
Do you know what check number that is?
Um, let me see. Where is it?
Yeah, that's a reimbursement, uniform allowance.
Shootout knife and court suit. What is a court suit? For him to go to court or? We have to pay for his attire to attend court? I don't know, I'm confused. That's kind of a lot of money, $564.
Yeah, that's exactly what the invoice says.
So if we have someone who has to go to court now, we have to spend $500 to buy him a suit?
Well, each officer, each, and like for the water and stuff, they get so much allotted for clothing allowance.
Well, you guys get $150, this is 560 bucks. I don't know.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see what the, and then, all right, and then what about the P C E for the Crispin Blue Way for $33,800? I don't know what that was. I thought the Crispin drain was done.
What check number is that?
Uh, let's see, 33,800, 37613, it's a, it's a check to P C E, 37613. It's engineering assist on Eagle P Crispin Blue Way.
Yeah, so that's multiple different projects. The first one, the Crispin Blue Way is $150.
How does it get up to $33,000?
Uh, there is 94, 94.78% completed for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund grant, loan. That was 9,200. There is 82.39% of engineering fees for San Souci wastewater treatment site evaluation at $5,025.
We already paid like $9,000 on that and another $5,000 on that?
Will you let her finish, please?
Okay.
Uh, Clay and Ira sanitary interceptor lining design engineering fees for 3825. M29 water main engineering design at 90.96% for 3,300. Drinking water state revolving fund loan project plan at 64.32%, $3,100. And interconnect with Ira at 52% at $9,200.
So for that water fund, we have a, we have a grant for that, right? Is this coming out of the general or is it coming out of the water?
It's coming out of the water. And, you know, to get these grants, and I've told this board several times, you have to do engineering to get the grants. And that's what, just what this is. And I'm sorry, but these engineering resulted in $6.5 million of grants that's going to really help out our citizens.
All of those projects are board approved as well.
And they're board approved.
They just bill us as they complete them, percentage-wise every month.
Okay, well, I, I don't think $500 for a suit is good though. I'm kind of having a little problem with that.
We should probably look into that. Okay, so we have motion and, and support on the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I am opposed, I'm opposed.
Okay. Motion carries. Next, first on the, under new business is resolution 23, 2023-21, special assessment for fire millage. Someone can make a motion and we can talk about it.
Make a motion to approve the 2023-21 special assessment for the fire millage.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. And this is 2.125 mills for the fire department.
That's the same as last year?
Same as last year.
So it's more than double, or the fire, or the police is more than double and we know we need more money for the fire department. So I guess I'm a little, a little hesitant about it.
Well, you don't want to pay?
I think it should be higher. I think the police should be lower and it should be higher. I think we should, I mean, the fire department gets 1.5 million and the police get 3.6 million. And, you know, our total expenditures are 7 million.
Where'd you get 7 million?
Wasn't that our budget? Total expenditures, 7 million, is that right? Am I wrong?
Yes.
Total expenditures, 7,102,900.
I had 3.6 plus 1.2.
I'm saying our total expenditures are 7.1. I think an auditor would say, you know, to spend half of your expenditures, and I love the police too, I want them, but I think it, it is kind of a lot.
Well, we're not talking about police yet, we're talking about fire.
Well, I mean, it would affect both. So I definitely.
Well, they're separate funds and you cannot transfer money from one fund to another fund. That's against the law.
I understand, but I'd like to see it raised and I'd like to see the police lowered on it.
Yeah, I think we're working on a long, long-term program on that, as we discussed during one of the budget meetings, as far as the increases and.
Wait for phone, can't hear you.
Well, I mean, I was supposed to see something on that, we haven't really seen it. I don't know, I mean, we hired the chief and assistant, right? That was how we solved it. And I know they're doing the best they can to man the island, but I thought we were going to let the public decide on maybe a bigger millage on fire.
Yes, we are.
But this is the same.
It has to go to election.
Right. But we're voting on it so it will go to election next, right? Is that what we're doing tonight?
This is to fund this next year. If we want to do a millage and put it out to vote, we have to wait and do that at an election for next year.
All right.
And we can let the people tell us. So we have motion and support for resolution 2023-21 to set the fire millage at 2.125 mills. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And next we have resolution 2023-22 to set the special assessment of police millage at 4.85 mills.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2322, setting the special assessment for the police millage.
Support. Okay, a motion and support. And there was some, what did Sherry come up with, with the average household paying for police?
The average parcels of residents pay under $350 annually.
Okay.
The majority of them are under 350.
So the gentleman said, Kristi said it was 750, but that's not accurate?
Right. Kristi ran the numbers, or Sherry ran the numbers, it was just under 350.
That's the average, so it ranges from.
Mm-hmm, like everything else.
Out of the 3,800 homes. So do you think it would be, if an auditor came in and said, you're, you know, you have 7.1 million in expenditures and 3.6 million's gone to police, do you think an auditor would say that's a healthy way to spend the money?
We get audited every year and that's never come up.
More than half?
That's not an auditor's decision.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
That's just the operating millage, that's not all of the revenue that they collect from other sources, the county and.
We can't hear you guys, you need microphones, please?
Um, you know, I'll tell you, from me talking to people, they want four things, basically. If their barn's on fire, they want someone to come and squirt water on it. If there's a bad guy in their backyard, they want someone to come and arrest him. If, they want their garbage picked up and they want good roads. Rest of it's pretty much fluff, all the parks and rec and everything else. And if we can do that through grants and everything, that's fine, but.
You're going to have lesser costs.
Well, I, I looked at, when I first got in the office going with the sheriff, and can they save money? Maybe. Would the service be there?
It certainly will.
I'm not, I'm not talking to you, this is a board discussion. Please.
Don't listen to us when we're at the microphone.
I've had incidents where, um, I don't, I seriously do not believe that their dispatch sitting up in Port Huron or Marysville, wherever they are, could properly dispatch our officers and fire department. I've seen where in occasion, someone calls 911 from their cell and it would get bounced up there. And it was a, a problem on South Channel and they dispatched for us our mainland. I've seen issues where someone called, there's a problem on New Baltimore Highway. They don't know that that's a water call. I've seen firsthand when there is a sheriff sitting behind my brother's marina at Tajmo Marina, there's a two-track. There's a two-track that goes beyond, through this marina. And he goes, what's, what's the sheriff here for? I don't know, ask him. And I was, it came up, I knocked on the window and he goes, what are you doing here? He goes, well, I'm looking for Tajmo Lane. I said, well, that's on the mainland where those condos are. And it took their dispatch about 12 minutes after that to actually figure it out and tell them to go there. And, and we get, we get calls where people don't know where they are. Uh, I'm sitting at a green buoy with the number six on it. I don't know where I'm at. They will not be able to handle that up in, up in Port Huron. They get too many, there's too many dispatchers, too much turnover for the training that we would have. So, but there's lots of other reasons too. Um, when this, when this millage was passed by our residents, it was passed overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, uh, majority. That's all.
Did it save us money, Artie?
I understand that. It's not going to happen tonight.
It's not going to happen, you just won't let it.
No, I'm not saying that.
Accident on the road that the police couldn't even find those kids. They have to get activated just like everybody else.
Okay.
So.
This is a board discussion here. Please.
So what is, uh, what is the percentage of our budget then on the spend on police? If it's not 50% and I've got my numbers wrong, what is the percentage?
I don't know, I don't have those figures in hand.
Well, I mean, this has got all of our expenditures on it with the police in it.
So, so right now, we don't have a, a proposal from the sheriff. We don't have discussions from the sheriff. We don't have any of this work laid out. So are you insinuating we should just contract with the sheriff today?
No, I'm not.
Neither am I. Neither am I.
I'm just thinking the millage is high. So, so let me ask about like how it's run. I understand there's two sergeants, a detective sergeant, a lieutenant, a chief, now again, a corporal. Is that, how many command officers to patrol officers? Do we know that? Like, is it top heavy?
Well, it might be two to one, but our, our, our command also are, is detectives. They do other things than the command staff at the sheriff department or larger departments.
We also cover Ira.
Yeah, we do cover Ira.
Then we get monetary, we also cover Ira, we also get a monetary.
You get a couple hundred thousand, right? It's not a lot.
Uh, it's around 370, I think.
Out of the three and a half million, it's still. All right, well.
No.
I, maybe, maybe it can be restructured in a way where we wouldn't need to have so much.
I'm not sure what Elgin Act pays, where are they, around one and a mil, 1.5?
I sit in here in the budget, would you know where to find it real quick?
No, one.
No, Elgin Act.
Elgin Act, one million.
Oh, I see.
Um, that's one, they are one and a half miles, square miles. On land, we're over 40 square miles. And we have 8,400 residents, but that's just homestead. Over 50% of our homes are not homestead, so I argue we have more people here than our, what the census say.
So we don't know how many non-homestead there are?
It's over 50%.
So with 8,400 residents, we have 3,800 homes, right? So it's probably 50% of that, so 3,800 plus 1,900?
What's your proposal, Maureen? Just, let's cut to the, do you have a proposal?
Well, I, look at possibly restructuring and lowering that millage.
Okay, in the meantime, are, do you not want to levy a mill to fund the police?
I don't want to eliminate it.
Okay, what's your proposal?
I just said.
To what, though? We need hard numbers today.
Why didn't you get them?
I, you didn't bring any options to us. I mean, I, I don't.
We, we've been talking about this budget for three, four months.
Yeah, I'm curious where all these questions were at our budget meetings.
Yes.
I did ask questions at the budget meeting.
You didn't ask about any of this.
Not about the police.
You didn't ask about any of this.
I didn't know.
What you're doing right now is grandstanding.
I didn't know about, I didn't know about all these officers versus how many. How many, I didn't know how many officers versus the, the people they're commanding them. I assumed it was run differently, so I did not ask that question, no.
Okay.
All right.
I apologize.
I guess, um, I mean, again, I'm treated with disrespect, told I'm grandstanding when I'm trying to be fiscally responsible, so. Thank you again for your respect.
I'm asking you to bring something to the table, I'm asking you with an option.
Well, then I say, let's table this and we'll look for an option.
If the board chooses to do that, that's fine. But in the meantime, we, we have to fund the police that we have. I mean, we got collective bargaining units and everything else. I could just imagine, yeah, I don't even want to imagine.
You know how I feel about the bargaining agreement too? I mean, 12% raise in three years is, you keep telling me everybody's getting this, but I, I don't know anybody in the corporate world who's going to get 5% this year, 4% next year, and 2 and 1/2% the year after that.
I gave you the facts from the Department of Labor. I handed them to you. The average raises for this past year for the US workforce was 8%. For this year. Did I not, did I, did I not provide that to you?
You gave it to me and.
And it was 8%, wasn't it?
I just don't know where you got the information.
It was from the US Department of Labor. It was 8%. Where's 5 plus 4?
I mean, that could be an average because, you know, they've raised, uh, they've raised wages for, you know, people at fast food places and these kind of things, but these jobs, you know, 5% is high. It's the average.
2% per year.
I mean, 2% seems fair.
Okay, 5% does seem a little aggressive, right? But what you have to do is you have to average that out over three years.
Well, it's 12% over three years because it's 5, 4, and 2 and 1/2.
Okay, so at 12%, it's a little less than 12%. So it's 3. what, 3.85 or something?
Almost 4, yeah.
So do you think 3.85 is too aggressive to keep our Clay Township employees with us? I'm talking to Maureen, please.
I don't know.
Is 3.85% too aggressive of a raise?
I think so.
Really?
My opinion.
I would argue the fact the cost of living is right there with the proposed.
Everybody, everybody is suffering, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
With the raised pricing and not all corporations are giving people 4% a year. I mean, I, and I know that Artie gave me this paper about 8%, but that's an average.
You have to look at it for three years, right?
We all know how statistics work, so. I mean, I, I guess we should have given them 24% then, because 8% is the average. So, all right, I've had my say.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion or? Questions?
Yeah, can, can, can you remind me at 4.85 mills, how much we're increasing that this year?
None.
And how much did we increase it last year?
None.
And how much did we increase it the year before?
I, what?
None.
None.
Thank you.
None.
When did it go in place? Four years ago?
Oh, quite a few years ago. So the rate has stayed the same.
I think Mr. Kraft brings up some very good points.
He does.
Certainly some things worth looking into.
I agree.
Um, you know, he, he certainly put some time in, he made some very valid points. Everybody else seems to be riding on the coattails of Vista Kraft tonight. And, uh. And I'm not in favor of it. So from my position as an elected official, if you expect me to vote no on a millage for our fire department, you're out of your mind. I am 100% on board with 4.85 mills.
I'm just wondering, you know, um, are we going to maybe start to get reports from Chief Coach? I'm not sure why we.
We can.
There are reports posted for every department on the website. They used to be in a board packet and there wasn't a reason other than to fill another 20 pages in the board packet. They're posted every month on the website.
Oh, once a month, where do I find those?
Under the department reports. Probably under documents. Off the hand, I don't have a computer in front of me.
All right, let me look for it.
Documents, reports, and then each division.
Thank you.
So I, I, I do, and I think we, we all should, look at some of the, um. Suggestions or the points that Mr. Kraft brought out. But I'm not ready to, uh. You know, make a drastic change tonight on this, so.
township letters and department reports.
Any, uh, any more discussion before I call a vote? No? Roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2023-23 garbage refuse and recycling fees. And proud to say that these are staying the same for, I think, the past three years also. Which other communities, I know they've been going up.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2023-23 for garbage and refuse and recycling fees.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. Any discussion on our garbage fees? Usually that's the hot topic. Hearing none, roll call.
Oh, when is our, um, when is our contract going to be up? Because I know we could have saved money with that other group.
I believe it, I, the, I believe it's next year. I can't, you should have asked me that before the meeting, I could have looked it up.
I, I think the other group went out of business.
Yeah, see, they were sold, yes.
Okay.
So.
So we don't have a chance to change it when it's at least a year, right? And we're, this is voting for a year. Okay.
So, uh, roll call.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes, motion passes. Okay, next we have a backup power generator for DPW. Um, hey Lance, how are we doing?
Just fine, Artie.
We have a quote from Ainsworth Electric for 49,550. And, uh, this is to run the water booster and, uh, well, go ahead Lance, tell them what's for.
Yeah, it's for our booster station and our building itself. This is something that Eagles recommended for us for quite a few years.
Yep. And the other quotes were, uh, oh, 78,000 and 75,000. I called Ainsworth, it's a good company, and they said this is a good generator. It's a 48 KW generator.
Budgeted.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW backup power generator for 49,550 dollars.
Support. Any more support? I can't remember, were we going to split this with sewer at all, or this is all water, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's pretty much all water.
Yeah. And we're going to be able to save money on the gas line too, because I've, they just run that new gas main down our, the street there.
Right.
And they had a planner come out and he recommends us just hooking up a service just for the generator.
Gotcha.
At a cost, he says it'd probably be about 3 or 400 dollars. And we don't have to run the line either.
Yeah. Again, what option are we choosing?
Uh, we are the 48 KW.
Okay. And the note at the bottom, Gas Ballpark budget number is approximately 7,000 or 9,000, depending on what unit? So that's the unit. It's going to be 9,000?
Actually, we're going to save, that's what I just stated, we're going to save that whole.
Costs.
Cost fee. Because Miller's going to put it in. I have to call the planner tomorrow, in fact, just to, from the gas company and let them know that what we're going to do and the size. They go, the generators broke down into BTUs for the amount of, uh, gas that it uses. So, once I give them the size of the generator and that, they can figure out exactly what size we need service-wise.
Less than a thousand bucks for gas.
Yes. Yes.
It's a good deal. Good work on that, Lance.
Thank you.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Lexipol policies and Academy for doing all their training, um, for the police. When did we go with Lexipol in the beginning? Was it two, three years ago?
This will be our third year.
Third year, that's what I thought. And, uh, we actually get a little discount on our insurance because they, uh, we, we go, go with Lexipol.
Correct.
Yes.
Chief, how many policies do we have in place now over the last two years?
Uh, I would have to say, well, I know we got about 700 pages of policies.
And they manage them all, update them.
Yes, Lexipol has a team of attorneys that's, this is all they do, is policies and write policies as well as update policies for agencies nationwide, so.
So essentially you have everything now electronic. It's updated real time as things are changing.
Yes.
And then it's pushed out to your employees?
Pushed out to the employees where we can monitor that as well to see who has actually gone and read the policies and acknowledged that they have received them and read them.
And all of your employees are complying at this time?
Yes.
So you have no more written book on the shelf policies from 1970? They've all been converted over?
No, no, that's been gone for the last couple of years now.
Hey Paul, how you like Lexipol?
I like it.
Good. We have motion and support?
Uh, no, I'll make a motion to approve the Lexipol policies and Academy for 12,230 dollars and 30 cents from line 207, 960. Now we do.
We have motion and support. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, we have a fire replacement of the garage door. We had a, a garage door on Harson's Island, one of the doors broke. And I wanted to table this. Because we were looking at, um, doing all three of the doors eventually because, uh, they're not rated for heat and we lose a lot of, uh, heat and energy through these doors. And we'd save considerable amount of heating money, um, if we replaced all three. And so, one, I wanted to get additional quotes. And two, I wanted to actually do like the three front ones.
You have a motion to table?
Yeah, one, so, yeah, I'd like to table it, so.
Support.
We, I'm motioning that we table this. We have support. Any discussion?
We have two other doors that'll work while, while we.
And we, we're going to fix this so it does go up and down.
Okay.
So, it's a little busted up, but. Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? All in favor of tabling the replacement of the garage door? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, 1G, uh, fire department, they need to hydro test their, uh, all their air bottles across 2814. From my, what, every five years they get, they need to be. Huh, yeah, you might as well.
Yeah, these bottles get done, uh, hydrostatic tested every five years because they're a composite bottle. The fiberglass wrap get done every three, uh, and the aluminum get done every five years too. These packs we, uh, received under, uh, AFG grant five years ago and they're up for inspection. Uh, they may come in a little bit cheaper. Uh, I've been talking with the, uh, the company. We're going in with Algenac, Ira, or no, Algenac, Marine City and us. And, uh, I think we're. I think we're getting it for $35 per, per bottle, so we're gonna have some savings there.
How many bottles do you have?
We have 64 plus one, um, writ pack. So we got, we got 65 bottles that get tested.
We have 69 here, but 65.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, um, getting a hydro test for the, the Scuba bottles for 2814? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have pump, pump testing apparatus center repair. 1,500 bucks.
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, this company, um, our old company that tested our, uh, our fire trucks went out of business. Uh, he retired. So we have another company that comes out of the Flynn area. They do, uh, St. Clair County, a lot of the departments in St. Clair County. Again, we're going in with Ira, Algenac, Marine City, and us, uh, for this, uh, service. So we'll, uh, get a better, better shot or a better price. In fact, we're paying what we paid last year with, uh, our old company, 250 per truck.
What's, what's the repair apparatus?
That's the company that comes in, they repair fire trucks.
That's the name of the company.
Yeah, that's the name of the company.
For the pump testing.
How often do we do this?
We do this once a year.
Every year.
It's required.
All right.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire pump testing apparatus from Apparatus Center Repair for $1,500 for line 206931.
Support.
Here we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, um, the pump testing for $1,500, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our annual air quality testing for our air compressors, right Chief?
Yes, we have two compressors. We have a, uh, station compressor on the, uh, station over in Harson's Island. And then we have a mobile compressor, which is in a trailer here on the mainland. And those are done yearly. It's a requirement.
Yep.
And they also send out an air sample, uh, to make sure that, uh, our compressors are working properly.
Make sure they're not filling, uh, our air tanks with oil.
Yes.
That's pretty much the way it is.
Yep. And the filters are replaced every year too.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual air quality testing, the amount of $1,866.96 coming from line 206-932.
Support. Yeah, motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the annual air test qua, annual air quality tests, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Supervisor, can I interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
I do not believe we made a motion for 1G. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hydro test SCBA bottles in amount of $2,814, coming from line 206-765.
Support.
Didn't we have a motion of support?
I don't think so.
Oh. Hi bad.
All right. Well, now we do.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, or anyone against it? Motion carries.
Okay.
All right, next we have, I was talking to George about this, uh, hire a grant writer through Lexipol. They, uh, go through, um, what's their, uh, success rate?
They have a better success rate, uh,
Than me and you.
Than, yeah.
Uh, they're, they're above 50%, aren't they?
Yes.
Here it is.
And, uh, It's a pretty tough, uh, when you submit to these grants to AFG, it's very competitive.
And this grant, you're, you're looking for radios?
Yes.
To the tune of 300,000?
Yes. And that'll replace our portables and our mobiles and all our vehicles. And we'll be compliant, uh, when they decide to go encrypted, uh, in the county.
So the county, they're changing, they're, they're forcing us to update our, our, um, radios. They're gonna be using encryption. And so we'll have to get with the times here sooner or later. And I, I said during the budget one, that's the elephant in the room. I, we're like, we hope we get a grant to pay for it. Cause it ain't cheap. So we want to hire a grant writer for, uh, 2995.
When's the deadline for the grant, do you know?
Pardon?
Do you know the deadline for the grant?
Uh, they have not opened yet. We're just getting ready for it and getting all our information.
Okay.
So we're prepared.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to hire grant writer Lexipol for $2,995 out of line 206971.
Support. A motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a new hire, part-time, Cole McGuffin. He's, uh, go ahead, Chief.
Okay, uh, he's not here tonight. And I was wondering if I could table this until our next board meeting, so I can bring him in front of the, the board?
Yeah, I have no problem with that if you want. I've met, I met him and talked to him twice. I already asked him if he knows how to swim. So.
I think we should look at the employment of relatives with respect to an employee that is related to somebody in the fire department. Specifically, I have a concern because it's, it's, it's not like you're in two different departments. They're, they're gonna be within the same department. And chances are, we'll have a direct report to somebody they're related to. The township policy strictly prohibits a direct report for that, so, I'm not so sure we can get around it, to be honest.
Unless we, uh, agree to, I mean, we've had a lot of, you know, fathers and sons working in our fire department, several times. And we need firemen, so, but I say, well, let's table this and.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we table this till Cole McGuffin can be here and I'll, um, if you want, I'll talk to our township attorney about, uh, our, uh, policies with, um, relatives.
I'll support supervisor's tabling.
Okay. Got motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all, all in favor of, uh, tabling the new hire, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. The next is, um, the OPEB, PEP audit. As you, uh, recall, last year, we didn't get our audit done for, it was very untimely in my book. And the main reason was, um, our current auditors had a prob, have had labor issues at the time. And, uh, doing this OPEB audit, they suggested to me that we go someplace else, um, to, to do the OPEB audit. And, um, they also suggested this Watkins Ross out of Grand Rapids. This is what they're experts at. And we have a quote to do this year's for 4,400. And they're actually, if we go with them, they're quoting us for the following year for $1,400. I know we paid our existing auditor last year about, it was over $4,000. So, um, if we make this a habit, we'll be saving, you know, 3,000 bucks doing the OPEB study starting next year. And this is what they're, uh, they're good at.
Did they say why it would be so much cheaper than the following year?
Uh, because they'll have all the, you know, you, yeah, they'll have all the information. You gotta do, uh, you know, actuary reports and, and, uh, all kinds of stuff and, uh, I mean, it's time consuming, but then they'll have to just do, okay, what changed from, you know, the past year?
Okay.
In my quest for a nonprofit auditor, um, this 4,400 dollars is relatively inexpensive.
Yes.
So, I, I agree with it.
Okay. This is mandatory under Gatsby? Yes, they started this two years ago, I believe. And, uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm anxious to see it, cause last year, we were close to being 100% funded on our OPEB. Which is a good thing. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the OPEB audit through Watkins Ross for the amount of 4,400 dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion?
Do we have to commit to the 1,400 also? It says.
No.
Oh, okay.
They just quoted that in the email below.
Next year.
Next year. Yep.
All right.
So, okay, any, any more questions? Okay, all in favor, all in favor of, uh, having our audit done, OPEB audit done by Wilkins and Ross for 4,400 dollars? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we have a, a new ZBA appointment, Carla Orlando. I'll see her here, no.
I know her, I know her quite well.
Yeah, I'm sure you.
And, uh, she's, you know, she's a, uh, bank manager and loan officer, as well as, uh, some other, uh, license, uh, from the state of Michigan. And I think she'd be a great, uh, asset to the, uh, ZBA.
Yeah, I'm, I was glad she came forward.
She live in Clay?
Yes. For a long time.
Great.
She raised her family here and she's served on a lot of nonprofits throughout the years.
And we lost Janice before she could start.
Well, she did, she had.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
I like Janice too.
So.
I'll make a motion to appoint Carla Orlando Corey to the ZBA, effective 8/7/2023 through 11/15/2025.
Support. Okay, I have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, uh, appoint, or appointing Carla Orlando Corey to the ZBA? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Okay, next we have board member comments. Cindy, do you have anything?
I do not.
What's that?
I said I do not, thank you.
Okay. How about you, John?
Um, just reminded, rather, this is coming weekend. Everybody be careful and be safe out there in the waterways. So.
Okay. Maureen?
This weekend, we will not be having the Harson's Island Transportation Authority meeting. That's being postponed. I know in, uh, in the newspaper, our LG wastewater treatment plant, they quoted that it's gonna service like 200 homes. I was told the first, this is the first phase and it's strictly for business. And maybe 20 homes, right Artie? So I just wanted to correct that. It's not, we can certainly expand it for the homes, but, um, I know we're gonna have the town hall meeting. So I hope to see y'all there on August 17th. And, uh, that's about it. Thank you.
Mark?
Planning Commission, uh, is gonna be, uh, Wednesday, the 23rd of this month. Uh, last planning commission, we approved a, uh, craft beer, uh, producer over on, uh, High Street. Uh, it's still in the implement, uh, inception stage of it, but it's gonna be a great asset, uh, to the community. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Did it give you samples?
Well, I don't drink, so.
Okay. For others.
Oh.
All right, Mr. O'Regan?
Uh, no comments tonight, supervisor.
Kristi?
I don't have anything either.
No? Um, I got a couple of things, I've forgotten our supervisor's report and I think the numbers are the date, it's the last weekend of August is our fall cleanup. I, I want, what's the last Saturday? Is it 27th? 26? It's, uh, 26 on the mainland and the island, then the 27th on the, on the island. Um, we'll be doing our, our fall cleanup. And, uh, I'm glad to see, uh, Ron Darga and Roger Boone, uh, going to get certified and, uh, expanding their expertise in our water department. And what, so there's no confusion with Maureen brought up with this LG wheel project, the treatment project on Harson's Island. Our, our, our ask was 3.5 million dollars, which would have paid for the plant and the collection system in the, in the area that we, we were hoping to, uh, service. They gave us 2 million dollars on the line, state line item. And the engineer said that will pay for the plant, construction, and hook up the, the businesses in the town, maybe a few other houses. And we are going, uh, before Eagle for additional 1.5 million dollars